May I have a motion to return to open session and approve certificate number eighteen dash nineteen dash four for the closed session?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Ream. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Palmeroy?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to mention to the general public that Dr. Melton is unable to attend the meeting this evening because he is attending the superintendent's professional conference. And as the superintendent's designee, Dr. Catlett will be representing Dr. Melton this evening. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve our agenda this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Holmes, second by Mr. Bailey. Are there any changes, discussions needed? If not, I will call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. The motion carries. Next item is the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as revised for the regular school board meeting held on August sixth?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boyd, second by Ms. Palmeroy. Was that you? Great, I got it right. Are there any changes or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on September tenth, twenty eighteen?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Palmeroy, second by Ms. Holmes. Are there any changes or discussions? I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Great. Now we come to the favorite part of the meeting. We will begin with the word of the month. I think it's Walker Grant. Yes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Catlett, board members, families, and guests. It's my pleasure to stand before you this evening as principal of Walker Grant Middle School as we present the word of the month knowledgeable. The International Baccalaureate Organization states that as a world school, we develop and use conceptual understanding, exploring knowledge across a range of disciplines. We engage with issues and ideas that have local and global significance. We believe that we become more knowledgeable when other languages are utilized to communicate, allowing us to engage with each other in meaningful ways. I have some guests this evening that would like to share those meaningful ways, and if they would please come forward.
I'm from Afghanistan. I speak Farsi. In my country knowledgeable means Danish.
Hi, my name is Ziva Kudruljula. I'm from Afghanistan. I speak Pashto.
My name is Derrick Gabriel Garcia Ortiz. I am from Puerto Rico. I speak Spanish.
My name is Erica Maya Rivera. I am from El Salvador. I speak Spanish.
My name is Katie Muñoz. I'm from Guatemala. I speak Spanish.
My name is Angelina Badassun. I am from Ghana. I speak Chi. In my country knowledgeable means Ngansan.
My name is Arya Oladi. I'm from Iran. I speak Persian. My country knowledgeable means Danish.
Hi, my name is Mike Alderbog. I'm from Iraq. I speak Arabic. In my country knowledgeable means Adam.
I would like to thank the school board for allowing my children to shine tonight. Keep in mind, these children did not speak English just a few years ago. Wow. Thank you.
Can we get them up for a picture?
Yes.
You all did a wonderful job. Thank you.
And if I may ask, you see the turnout this evening. I'd like to also have the parents stand and be recognized for their support of our ELL program, as well as Fredericksburg City Public Schools. So. Can you bring them up this way?
This way, so she can get a picture.
And they can face around. And put their hair, and have them hold their flags up.
You all did a great job.
Yeah.
Get between them, or...
Can you get them in?
Yeah, or go over a little bit to the left. There you go.
Get that little man up front. There you go. Madam Chair, board members, administrators, guests, teachers, good evening. The Rappahannock Mini Grant Program is sponsored by the Rappahannock Education Rotary, excuse me, Rappahannock Rotary Education Foundation. This initiative provides funding in support of the design of innovative educational programs which promote creative instruction and interactive learning. With us this evening, we have former CEO of Mary Washington Healthcare, Mr. Fred Rankin, and current chairman of the Rappahannock Rotary Education Foundation. Mr. Rankin, would you come forward? This evening, we have several faculty members from across the school division who are being recognized because the proposals they submitted for consideration are being funded by the Rotary's Education Foundation. So momentarily, when I call you forward, Mr. Rankin and his associates will present you with a check in support of your proposal, and we'll have an opportunity for a photo as well. So when your name is called, please come forward. Mrs. Katie Hornung? Mrs. Hornung is an English teacher at James Monroe High School, and Mrs. Hornung's proposal is entitled Better Global Citizens Through Integration of Technology. All right, let's give Katie a round of applause. Mrs. Evelyn Frankel. Mrs. Frankel is a special education teacher at Lafayette Upper Elementary School. Mrs. Frankel's proposal is entitled Yoga for Students with Special Needs. Mrs. Annette Richards, school counselor Lafayette Upper Elementary School. Mrs. Richards could not be with us tonight, but in her absence, Mr. Terry, Principal Terry, Lafayette will accept the check from the Rotary on her behalf. Mrs. Richards' proposal is entitled Bridging Focus, Bringing Focus to Learning. Thank you, Mr. Terry. Mrs. Shay Scruggs. Mrs. Scruggs? Mrs. Scruggs is a fourth grade teacher at Lafayette Upper Elementary School. Mrs. Scruggs' proposal is entitled Fun and Flexible in Fourth. All right, congratulations, Mrs. Scruggs. Mrs. Lisa Lewis and Mrs. Courtney Herrera. Mrs. Lewis could not make it this evening, so Mr. Terry, you're on duty again to accept the award on...
Mrs. Herrera.
Okay, Mrs. Herrera, you want to do the honors? Okay. Mrs. Herrera is a fourth grade teacher, Lafayette. And Mrs. Lewis and Mrs. Herrera's proposal is entitled Student Program Robots for Kids. Congratulations, Mrs. Herrera. I am pleased to announce that Fredericksburg City Public Schools was awarded in total eight thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-nine cent in grant funding from the Rappahannock Rotary Foundation. Mr. Rankin, on behalf of the City School Division, we'd like to thank you and your associates for your warm generosity and your willingness to support our students. And you may have the floor.
Madam Chair and member of the Board of the Fredericksburg Public Schools, on behalf of the Rappahannock Rotary Educational Foundation, we're delighted to participate here at this board meeting and to award these grants. The grants we received this year were innovative. They were out of the box. They were, they will contribute to knowledge. And we couldn't be happier, the Rotary Club and the Educational Foundation, to be partners with the Fredericksburg Public Schools. With me tonight were two of my colleagues, and I want to acknowledge and introduce them, Mr. Mike Gillenwater, who serves on the board with me, and Mr. Adam Idson, who serves on the board with me. Thank you very much.
Next is for the birthday design contest. The birthday card contest initiative was developed by Dr. Melton in two thousand seven. Each year, art teachers are asked to submit student artwork for entry into the card design contest. The winning design is selected by central office employees. Throughout the school year, every Fredericksburg City Schools employee receives a birthday card with the winning design from Dr. Melton. This year's card was designed by Yenifer Aguilar Hernandez, a student at James Monroe High School. Yenifer is the daughter of Lilian Consuelo Guevara.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Dr. Catlett, school board members, and all of our guests tonight. It's a pleasure to see you all. We are pleased to recognize scholars who received a perfect score on two of the SOL tests they took last year. First, I would like to recognize Sarah Fermuli for having exceptional SOL assessment performance last year when she was in the fifth grade at Lafayette Upper Elementary School. Sarah received a perfect score on both her reading and mathematics SOL assessments. Sarah is the daughter of Abdul and Sarah Fermuli. I'd like to invite up Dr. Rochelle from James Monroe High School at this time.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Catlett, and families. I too am excited to recognize a student who received perfect scores on two SOLs this past school year. John Kingsley, son of Mr. Michael Kingsley and Mrs. Mary Kingsley, received perfect score on his World History I and Algebra II SOL exams. Next, I would like to recognize our first Optimist Student of the Month for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. Faculty members are asked to nominate a member of the senior class for recognition as the Optimist Club Student of the Month. The purpose of the award is to recognize students for their efforts in arts, athletics, academics, and community service work. I am pleased to recognize the following senior who was selected for the month of September. Mashanna Tucker, daughter of Ms. Pamela Marshall. Mashanna, please come forward.
Congratulations again, and thank you. We're going to take about a one-minute recess to give those of you who would like to exit at this time, but you're certainly welcome to stay for the entire meeting. But if anyone wants to leave at this point, it's a good time. Oh, that was a beautiful showing.
That was absolutely. I loved it. It like made me teary. I mean, I just think...
And then it's beginning. So there's hope.
Thank you. Thank you. She makes a speaking class every time, but every day, but...
Where are you taking it?
Very last. A bunch of young whippersnappers. I don't know if I rebooted.
Our English teachers...
Mine hadn't been working. Started back up again. That's right, yeah. Mine's from Spain, and she's here from here. It's worse for you. Right? And you've got to be taking notes sometime, too.
The next item on the agenda is hearing of citizens. We have a request from Ms. Holly Tillman and Riverbend High School student Mimi Deans to discuss the Twenty-four Seven Y Street Campaign. Ms. Tillman contacted us today, and unfortunately, due to illness, she and Ms. Deans will be unable to present this evening. They hope to attend the meeting in November. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board this evening? Hearing from none, we'll close that portion of the agenda. Okay, the next item, superintendent's report consent agenda. I recommend that the board approve the consent agenda as presented with the following items: Appointment of advisory committees, policy revision second reading, TRIP requests James Monroe High School IB diploma program, TRIP requests James Monroe High School choir, additional extracurricular activities James Monroe High School, HITS start approvals two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, supplemental appropriations, revisions, and date change for January school board meeting. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mrs. Holmes and second by Mr. Bailey. Is there any discussion, statements?
So the January meeting will be on Tuesday, January fifteenth?
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct. Yep. The only item that, Dr. Melton's not here, but I noticed the appointment of advisory committees, and I would just like to stress to the administrators that as we develop these committees, that we'll be mindful of minority participation on the committees. And he's not here for me to ask tonight, so I'll wait and see him when he returns. So having the motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? And ayes have it. The next items, action items. And we begin with personnel. I recommend that the board approve the personnel schedules, including the addendum information shown as of October one, two thousand eighteen. Is there a motion to approve personnel?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Palmeroy, second by Ms. Ream. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Kay?
Yes.
Ms. Palmeroy?
Yes.
Okay, the next action item is approval of the Fredericksburg City Public Schools Comprehensive Plan. I recommend that the school board approve the Fredericksburg City Public Schools Comprehensive Plan for two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-three. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Holmes, second by, was that you, Ms. Boyd?
It was.
Okay. Ms. Boyd? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it unanimously. Next is the V SBA Bullying Prevention Month Proclamation. In an effort to promote awareness of school bullying, the V SBA Board of Directors has designated the month of October as V SBA Bullying Prevention Month. Each of our schools has implemented programs to address anti-bullying in our schools. Fredericksburg City Public Schools wishes to join the V SBA in recognizing the effects of bullying and the need for bullying prevention programs. Ms. Boyd will now read a proclamation for consideration by our board.
Whereas school bullying has become an increasingly significant problem in the United States and Virginia, and whereas over twenty percent of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim, and whereas an estimated one hundred sixty thousand students in kindergarten through twelfth grade miss school every day due to a fear of being bullied, and whereas bullying can take many forms, including verbal, physical, and most recently in cyberspace, and can happen in many places on and off school grounds, and whereas it is important for Virginia parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community, and whereas the Fredericksburg City School Board has adopted policies that address anti-bullying to encourage positive behaviors and to eliminate bullying behaviors. Now therefore, the Fredericksburg City School Board joins with the Virginia School Boards Association in recognizing the month of October, two thousand eighteen, as V SBA Bullying Prevention Month, with the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention be discussed in our schools and classrooms during that time.
I recommend that the school board adopt the proclamation, which has just been read, recognizing the month of October, two thousand eighteen, as Bullying Prevention Month, and noting the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention be discussed in our schools and classrooms during that time. May I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Been moved by Ms. Palmeroy, second by Ms. Ream to approve the recommendation. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it unanimously. So next, we're at our information items, and the first item is the instructional presentation, pros and cons of a calendar change. Dr. Russ?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Rollins Cade, Dr. Catlett, board members and guests. It is my honor, as of right now, this may change as we move through this process, to start... to start discussion with you. The pre-Labor Day Start Study that has been performed by a committee that we put together, we're going to talk about some pros and cons. We've come up with some frequently asked questions. Along with those questions, we've provided some answers. And then at the end, there'll be a time for questions, comments, concerns that you may have. Our goal is to go from this as an informational item to an action item next month with you guys directing us as to what's next for us. But let's go through this. I want to think. Where do I point this, Mike? Go back one, so I don't touch it. Okay, I want to thank each member of this committee. We've met two times, but each member of this committee has contributed in more than just sitting in that meeting. Also, if you would, take a name, take a look at those names, questions you may have tonight that I don't have the answer to, I'll be glad to share the floor with any of these people.
You're a giver.
Thank you. Team player. Okay. So guidelines, there are four ways you can be approved as a school division to start prior to Labor Day. First, if your division has been closed for an average of eight days in any year, weather-related, for any five years of a 10-year period, you can ask for, and most divisions are granted a waiver if that is the case for them. Second, if your division provides services in conjunction with another division that qualifies for such a waiver. As we all know, Spotsylvania is a pre-Labor Day start now. If we were in a CTE program with them, that is another way we could ask for the waiver to begin early, as they do. If your division is providing an experimental or innovative program that requires you to start early, there's not many divisions that have been granted a waiver based on that, but there are, I think there are two that I know of. And then last, and this is the option that would pertain to Fredericksburg City Schools. If your division is entirely surrounded by a division or divisions that start prior to Labor Day, you can ask for a waiver, be granted a waiver for that. So if Fredericksburg City Schools were to begin prior to Labor Day, this would be the provision, number four, that we would be granted a waiver. Any questions about these?
We wouldn't qualify for number two because of regional alternative ed?
No, not this year.
I mean, because Stafford will start next year and we do that program with them, yeah.
I don't know if that program will be considered big enough. For us, that's only six, six of our students that are in there at any given time, but that's a possibility. It didn't come up this year because for this current school year we are in, they started after Labor Day, as are we. But next year, they'll start prior to Labor Day. Okay, if you take a look at this map, notice, this is for the school year 2017, 2018. The new updated map could come out any day. When it does, Spotsylvania will not be yellow. And for next year, Stafford will not be yellow.
Can you tell us, since we can't?
We can't read.
We can't read.
Oh, you don't have them on your screens?
No, but, and so, yeah.
What do you want me to tell you?
Just tell us what the colors mean.
Okay, the yellow is the waiver, oh, no waiver. If they're yellow, they start after Labor Day. Light blue, weather-related waivers. So all of the divisions, most of the divisions to the west are weather-related. That's the eight days averaged over any five of a 10-year period. The green, depending, dependency on other divisions. In other words, they share a, an innovative program? No. I don't know what the dependency on other divisions is. There's only one of them.
What's pink?
The pink and green, those are the two that we need.
Uh, yeah, the orange, and I only see one of those.
Orange.
Arlington, it has a, nope, there are two. Richmond City. An innovative or experimental program, and I don't know what those two programs are. Next, divisions surrounded by qualifying division. If you look at all of the city, most of the city school systems, the little purple dots, those are all school divisions that started because they're surrounded by another division. And then the pink, they received this waiver prior to 2011, 2012, provided by the Appropriation, Appropriation Act. Those schools all start prior to Labor Day. So this, this map will look different next year. The two yellow, Stafford and Spotsylvania, are going, after next school year, they will be not yellow.
And King George, yeah.
Yep, King George is already.
I can't.
They're already blue.
Yeah.
And so is Caroline.
Okay.
So the only schools that's on that that start after Labor Day are the yellow.
Yellow, correct.
Okay.
Most everything east of 95.
Wow.
Like Fairfax and Prince William, they all start?
They start early.
Okay.
Yeah, it's hard to see what, where the, you'll send this to us.
I mean, I can see that there's no yellow.
Yep.
There's no yellow up there, right?
I, I really want the, the newest, the 18, 19.
Yeah.
And it should be coming soon.
But doesn't Richmond, like Henrico and Richmond and Chesterfield, don't they all start after Labor Day?
They do. Hanover, Henrico.
Is that yellow? I can't.
Yeah, it's yellow.
Okay. But next to pink.
The most west division that starts after Labor Day is Powhatan.
Okay.
Just think, if we wait, we could be the last yellow state.
We could. So the next two slides are a list of pros and cons. As a committee, we elected to use these eight. We completely understand, we could list eight or 18 more pros or cons. But these seem to be some, some common pros and cons. For instance, if we were to go prior to Labor Day, our schedule would mirror that of surrounding divisions. So we would start when they start and when they end. I'll just go down the list of pros and then we'll come back to the con side. We could end our first semester at winter break. The next one, not because I'm involved a lot with human resources, but we would be on the same hiring schedule as surrounding divisions. Let me explain a little bit about this. While we are in school the last two weeks of June, even the last week of May, and the first two weeks of June, I apologize, other divisions are now free to hire. Principals are free to interview. If there's still job fairs they can go to, they can. But we're still in school, so the surrounding divisions are getting a jumpstart on us. And another, another way this has affected us is by school divisions starting back prior to Labor Day. That closes the window as to when we could get transfer employees from other school divisions. For instance, we had offers on the table to teachers in other school divisions this year that wanted to come to Fredericksburg, but it was too close to the start of their school year, so they were not released from their contract, and I completely understand that. Also, our SOL fall retakes could be completed prior to winter break. On the flip side, some cons to this would be the high temperatures on buses. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that in the frequently asked questions. Some families may already have summer vacations planned for this coming summer. There are budget issues. And what I mean by that, new funding is available July 1. That puts us in a time crunch if we were to start earlier in, in getting those items that we need purchased. With that new money done so, and then the time to clean our buildings. Now, getting out mid-June, starting back after Labor Day, we're still to the last minute getting most of our schools cleaned and waxed. So this is really going to close the summer up probably three weeks. So that, that, the reason I have first year in parentheses here, that should only be an issue for the very first transition year.
And will the funding just be, the funding will continue to be an issue? And that would continue to be an issue? Like that would, that wouldn't be just a one-year adjustment?
And. And what he's discussing, what he's talking about right now, from a teacher's point of view or an employee's point of view, they're going to look at that as, wow, that's a plus, and August, I'm going to get paid four times. But that falls on a finance department of Mr. Baker and two other ladies, three other ladies doing payroll. So that, that's going to be a crunch.
Is, is there, is that the kind of job that we could hire a temp to help with for a short amount of time? Okay, can you get on that? Okay.
But I've been told we can pull it off.
You've been told what?
We can pull it off.
Okay.
Next slide. Some more pros, the fall and spring sports schedules would be in line with school schedules. As you all know, golf season almost ends right after school starts. Football season now, we're playing almost two games before school even starts. The school schedule would mirror childcare schedules in surrounding counties. We lost teachers this year whose children go to daycare in counties outside of Fredericksburg because the childcare, one example is Hazelwild. They're on Spotsylvania's schedule, start, start date, end date, snow days and all of that. So that is a dilemma for teachers the first two weeks of the year and the last two weeks of the year. So that would be ironed out. That goes along with the next one. The teacher's schedule would match child's school schedule. If, take away daycare, if their child goes to school in Spotsia, Stafford, that's also a dilemma for them if our teachers are in school. And we, like I said, we lost teachers because of the schedule this past year, and some good ones. I won't call them by name, but we would take them back. The last one is structured schedules match surrounding divisions. This would allow teachers and students to, if they so chose, so chose to enroll in, for instance, an early summer class at Mary Wash or other, other schools, even online classes, would allow students and teachers to enroll in classes earlier, by us being out earlier. Some more items down the cons side. We would have to decide as a division. We would probably recommend or propose this as a committee and get the school board's support on which summer programs. And this would only be for the first year if we would have to not offer some of the summer programs. Right now, we currently offer summer school, summer scholar, summer fund, Kinder Camp, Parks and Rec, and of course E S Y. There's a few of these that it's not an option we can't not do, but it could, it could restrict us that we could not offer all of them the very first summer. School planning for the new year, there's a lot of work done. People don't realize this if they haven't been a principal or assistant principal, but there's a lot of work done from the last day of school to the first day of the next year. A lot of planning that goes on, student placements and so forth. Again, you would lose three weeks of that time. There would also be a timing of the S I S Student Information System rollover. And as Mr. Baker was mentioning, payroll with a shorter summer. The Student Information System, Sonia may be able to help us out. That always roll over at the same time? Okay. Right, a lot of that is based on percentage of students that have enrolled, correct? All right. And as you all know, from looking at personnel package, packets each month, it's depending on the number of vacancies we have to fill. Sometimes it goes all the way to the beginning of the school year to get those vacancies filled. A beginning, I mean, an earlier start date would eliminate three weeks of that. But we're going to retain the biggest majority of our teachers this year, so that probably will not be an issue this summer. Hopefully. Next slide. Next slide. Some of the frequently asked questions we're going to include. If our family has already planned, scheduled, and paid for a family vacation, will those days count as unexcused absences? The answer to that is no. The days missed at the beginning of a school year, if you're on a family vacation and are not at school on the very first day of school, you will not be marked as absent because you're not enrolled as a student. But when you do come back, you'll be allowed to make up any missed work. Another question we're going to hear or have heard. Are all F C P S school buses air-conditioned? The answer to that is no. We are on a schedule at this time of buying two new buses each summer. When we do that, those buses are air-conditioned. So we currently have a total of six out of about 37-ish. To retrofit all of the fleet to be air-conditioned, it would cost us almost a half a million dollars. But our students survive some extremely hot days already in summer when we start even after Labor Day. What impact will a pre-Labor Day start have on existing summer programs? We've already discussed that. If we do start early, we will probably not be able to offer all of our summer programs the first shortened summer. After that first year, they'll all be back. But we will form a committee and decide or propose these are the programs we run or don't run. And the last F A Q we have included here. If it is decided to begin the school year prior to Labor Day, will this happen this coming school year, 1920, or 2021? And I'm sure you all will be pleased to know our answer is we will provide as many options as you all want, and this ultimately will be a school board decision. So our request is, I'll come back to that. Go to the next slide. We are prepared to, with, with your approval, we are prepared to distribute in as many ways as we can think of a survey to as many people as we can get to, to offer their advice, their concerns, their wishes. We're proposing to run this survey beginning tomorrow or Wednesday through the last Friday of October, I believe it's the 26th. We want to put the results of that together, bring back to you guys as an action item, and then you tell us, there's a couple of options. No, we're not going to go with a pre-Labor Day start. Or you may say, bring back to us options of both pre-Labor Day and post-Labor Day. But one big decision, let's say we were to, to start pre-Labor Day. Two decisions. Do we do that this coming year, or do we wait the year after that? And some divisions have, have eased into it. If, if it's done that way, a lot of those cons that we had listed as it would only be an issue for the first year, that would be extended for another year or two. So I do know our request or our suggestion is going to be if we, if we do start prior to Labor Day, we do it all at one time.
By easing into it, you mean start one week earlier and then?
Two weeks early, the next. But again, um, so what we're asking permission to do is the survey that we have, the first, the first part of the survey is just going to be informational, a lot of the information that I've just given you. Uh, the second part will be, we want whoever's filling this survey out to let us know if they're a parent of elementary, middle or high. And you can, uh, select here more than one item. Um, next slide. And we're simply going to ask, should we begin school before Labor Day? We're going to do this as a Likert scale. We don't want to go yes or no, and that's the only option they have. Some parents may say I'm neutral, but I want you to think about this. Uh, some are going to strongly disagree, some are going to strongly agree. Um, if you look at the last item, uh, in the space provided, please share your comments, concerns related to a pre-Labor Day opening for S C P S, um, and that will be open-ended. So it's going to take a little bit of time, once we close the survey down, to compi- compile the results, especially the open-ended part of it.
So when, yeah, I would, I would recommend that you get that done so that all of that, we can have that information a good week before.
Right, we're going to close it on the twenty-sixth. What, what's our next board meeting?
Well, can we just take a step back for a second? I'm battling with this because, um, I haven't heard the impact on children. It seems like everything that I've heard has to do with the conveniences or inconveniences of adults. And I haven't seen any statistics that tell me that student achievement improves because we're starting earlier. Minority test scores are going to improve because we're starting earlier. I haven't seen any data or anything related to any, any of that. So I'm not sure I understand why we're doing this yet. And if I'm battling with it, I know parents would also, um, want to understand first, can we have a definition of why the Fredericksburg City's public school system would want to start before Labor Day? I mean, I'm neutral, but I'm battling with the fact that I haven't heard anything about our students and what this does from an educational programmatic standpoint for our students. And that would help if we had more data.
Right, and what, what I guess we need you all to know is, and this came up in our committee meeting, we're not coming to you guys to say, we want to start early and here's why we think it should happen.
Okay.
And we're not coming to you all to say, we don't want to start early and this is why it should not happen. We're coming completely neutral. This is an item that is, has been coming up. Uh, we've received questions, many, many questions from, uh, from parents, teachers. I haven't received questions from students, but I'm sure they're out there. Uh, I've received questions from some of you guys. Uh, so we know it's an item that's going to be discussed and questioned. So we're coming with, let's, let's talk about it. Here's a list of pros, here's a list of cons. And I understand we haven't provided data or research. I'm sure we can do that with two-thirds of the state starting before Labor Day. I know there is data out there. So that's something we can compile, uh, and bring back next month or get it to you during this month.
I would expect a recommendation eventually.
Right.
Okay, okay.
Can we include on the survey, um, an option for a student? That, that a student could be responding to the survey?
Oh, as in the number two, the second part, yes.
How are you going to make sure that, that people answer once? You don't get a lot of families saying, okay?
That's over my head. Can, can, can it be monitored that one person can do one survey?
We can let I D addresses, but if they're doing it within school, then it will all.
I, I guess you have to assume if they go to the trouble of doing that, then they really strongly agree and?
Well, I don't think we should assume that the majority is, is, is the way it's going at this point. You're just getting the opinions.
Just want the feedback.
Yeah, you just want feedback.
And that's why we looked at questions of other divisions. We looked at survey questions of other divisions, uh, and the manner in which some of the questions were asked, people had no option but to select, yeah, we're going early and this is how it's going to affect us. Uh, so we're trying to make this survey as neutral as possible. And again, as Fredericksburg City Public Schools, we're not coming to you all to say, we want to do this or we want to do this. Our thing is if we are going to start early, let's, let's bite the bullet.
Um, I would also like to know for those school systems who have started earlier, that blue on the map, you know, since it's to the west, what were some of the reasons? Could it be agriculturally in terms of?
Most, most west is, uh, completely weather.
It's weather-driven?
Yeah, southwest and even over two eighty-one. Now, Stafford, Spotsylvania, down the ninety-five corridor, I can't, I can't say that it's weather-related.
Okay. They always miss more days than we do.
Yeah.
I know in, in King George, one of the big things that was discussed was, um, how the winter break finishing in the S O L schedule.
Yep.
Being able to finish, um, be prior to the break so that you wouldn't have that loss of, of, of knowledge over the break.
Right.
And it just, it made it work so much better.
I've heard that coming up by several divisions.
The only thing that I want to point out about that is just keep in mind, because we're not on a block schedule. It's only three takes.
That's right, that's true.
Thank you.
Right, and, and we were on the block.
Right.
Isn't, is there, is it true that there's some better alignment with A P testing? Is that?
All of our A P tests are, um, in the spring in May, so.
I, I heard something about that, but I can't tell you what it was.
I haven't seen exactly what the schedule would look like, but we're told those A P dates and I know that they're in May.
Oh, I guess what it was is just that you have more instructional time before the test, so.
Yes, that is true.
Yeah.
And for S O Ls as well.
And S O Ls, yeah.
And then it, it cuts out that?
Not really.
Not really. But it cuts out that end of the year, like the last week or week and a half of school.
And that, no, we always have a window that leaves a lot.
Okay.
So the buildings choose how much time they have after S O L testing.
Okay.
We can start testing as early as March for S O L testing.
Okay. What are the dates that we're considering starting or like, do we have those, like what?
No, no, what's?
So what are we talking here?
Ballpark, three weeks.
Starting three weeks early.
Prior to Labor Day.
Well, I think that people need to know that when they're taking a survey.
Well, and that's, okay. But our, our ideal, I think, was to first get this survey, get the results to you all and then you tell us, bring us options. Or you tell us, nope, we're not starting.
Well, but starting, like starting the twentieth of August would not be an option because then it wouldn't solve any, it wouldn't solve any of those problems. We wouldn't be aligned with Spotsylvania and Stafford. We wouldn't finish before, we wouldn't finish the semester before holiday break.
And that's probably key is when surrounding divisions start, that would be, have a huge impact on our.
Right, for those of us who don't care about what the counties are doing, we wouldn't, we would not be impacted by that.
No.
So you're going to hear that from some of the public as well.
I think more than caring about it, it seems to me what drives us is staffing.
Right.
Uh, and where we, yeah, I mean, where we pull our, our staff.
Yep, starting, starting three weeks different than the divisions close to us is, is a strain on human resources.
Right, so if whether it's, it's the staff we currently have or in hiring, recruiting new staff.
Right.
Have you, I don't want to put you on the spot, but have you, based on our, the flexibility we do have in testing and so forth, what is, is there any measurable impact that you are aware of on student achievement just with the, the two week or however many week difference in starting time?
I've never been asked to look, but I do have a note because of.
All right, okay.
I always ask them the question, I'll look into it, I'll be sure that I have information for you.
But nothing comes to mind, I mean, with all these.
There's not a general knowledge that I can say people discuss that as a reason to.
Right, it doesn't sound like it, but I mean, it's good to check out, right?
Do we have?
If you, if you look at where are we, where we are in the handle, when you go that far enough, it really had to do with almost no schools are air-conditioned.
Right.
On August. And no one really cared to look into student achievement. It was more about how to get cheap labor for a source and accurate learning based upon. So there was no students, to my knowledge, a raw amount of student test data. But tell me, but it was a good idea to go after.
It's arbitrary, well, not arbitrary, but based on that.
Right, it wasn't, it wasn't a topic. I do, it was definitely not a topic.
Do we know approximately, like, just, I guess I, I'm curious about how many of our staff members are impacted by their, their children going to a different, um, school system? You know, like their kids being on a different schedule than they are.
I don't have the numbers.
Uh-huh.
Um, but I know there are some, I could give you specific teachers' names that left Fredericksburg City Schools because their children were on a different schedule and they weren't going to be able to work it out because they had to come back or they're going to finish before their child finishes this year.
That would also be difficult to really get a true impact because you don't know how many people didn't even apply because we were going to be on a different schedule.
Right, right.
So it could be a much larger impact than the data would show.
Yeah.
I'd be curious to know on, in our present staffing, how many folks actually live in other districts?
The majority.
Majority.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I figured.
No doubt. So our plan is unless you all give me different direction, is to, um, make the survey available. We will add the items you all asked us to add. Uh, as soon as we close it, we'll, um, compile the data and get that information to you. So you have it to look at prior to the board meeting.
Are you going to indicate a, like a date range of like three weeks before? I mean, before Labor Day could be August thirty-first.
Right.
So before Labor Day is kind of?
So how, should we, how are you all suggesting we do that? Give them?
Like the second week of August.
Okay.
You could even say up to, including three weeks prior or second week of August or whatever.
I mean, it would be what, the twelfth of August next year and the tenth of August in twenty twenty?
I don't know when the surrounding divisions start, all of them, but it seems to me that they all end before that, um, Memorial Day weekend. I mean, the ones that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
So maybe you can back.
Count back.
Count back some and make ours fit.
Because I think that'll make a difference if people know that it is not, you know, August twenty-fifth.
So are you suggesting where I have a pre-Labor Day start in parentheses, put on or around?
August twelfth.
A date?
Yeah.
And then when, when school would end?
Okay.
Or either that or in the information you have ahead of, you know, before.
That's true.
Just define it there and then?
Right.
We may do that.
Yeah, that's fine.
Because you're right, it's real different to say a week before or three weeks. And like, you know, you, one of my questions was you said that there would be excused absences, but not everybody might be, have a vacation planned for that first week.
Well.
They might have it planned for two weeks into our school, you know?
They would have.
Well, I'm not sure we should just use vacation as a reason. If a parent wants to be home with their child, that should be excusable as well. Suppose they can't afford to take a vacation.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But not many of them are going to just keep their kid.
Yeah. I may have to take vacation, but I can't, I can't afford to go anywhere.
Well, that's still a vacation. It's a staycation.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Baker, the financial report.
You have before you the, uh, end of month for, financial report for August thirty-first. Again, it's early in the year and, uh, we haven't closed the entire year out from the prior year. Um, I will say that we had slight variances projecting that far into the future. Just since there's so much time left after that discussion, I want to briefly tell you about where we are with the Tyler Munis accounting conversion. Um, we have an accounts payable go-live date that's been pushed back from this month, Aug, in October. It's been pushed back to January eighteenth. Um, so the go-live for accounts payable is the beginning of the year. Also, the payroll and, uh, human resources training, that phase of the conversion, uh, was supposed to start in October and we're still pushing for that. So, uh, our staff will begin to go to the initial training for the, for the, it's really the third phase. Uh, the second phase had to do with some billing, uh, at the city. To let you know, one reason we're pushing for that payroll and H R to start now is we feel like we need every day of the nine-month, um, head start to get this thing done correctly the first time without a, a lot of delay. And that could impact any decision we make about this year or next year converting to a different calendar. As we said before, uh, that's going to impact how many payrolls we run in August. If, uh, the first pay becomes August, if you start the second week in August, uh, you'll have preschool orientation the first week of August. So in all likelihood, you're going to, you're going to want to start payroll in August. So, um, that's, that's all going to play into this and we need to be adaptable and, and have enough head start to, um, to be ready to go either way. And like, like, uh, Mr. Russ said, we'll make it happen, uh, however we have to do it, but we're going to take two different paths depending on when that, when that would be implemented. Any specific questions about the financial report?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item, um, update on school enrollment, Dr. Russ?
Uh, yes, I want to compare the ten-day enrollment numbers to the, the most recent, uh, enrollment study we had done by Mosley. Do you all remember that?
Yes.
Uh, at Hugh Mercer, we were projected to be at eight hundred and eighty-eight students this school year from that enrollment study. Uh, actual number on the tenth day of school was nine oh six, so we were eighteen students above the projected enrollment. Uh, at Lafayette, we were projected to be at eight fifty-seven, uh, tenth day of school, we were at eight thirty-five. So that is a, uh, decrease of twenty-two students. At Walker Grant Middle School, we were projected to be at seven hundred and ninety students and we were actual seven sixty-four. Again, that was day ten, so that was twenty-six less than the projection. Uh, again, keep in mind, these are ten-day numbers. I, I can almost guarantee you, especially at Walker Grant, that number has climbed from seven sixty-four. And then at, uh, James Monroe, we were projected to be at one thousand thirty-one and ten-day enrollment was one thousand thirty-five, so an increase of four. Overall, uh, we're down nineteen students from the projected enrollment. Uh, three thousand five hundred and fifty-nine was projected and at day ten, which was September seventeenth, we were at three thousand five hundred and forty. Um, on any given day, if you all want to, where are we now? We can get those numbers to you as, as well. But these are numbers we have to report, uh, ten-day enrollment numbers. So that's the numbers we wanted to use tonight because these are official as of that date.
Any questions?
I guess, uh, just, um, thought you were comparing to Mosley, but you weren't comparing to where we were last year.
Correct, and that, did you all get a copy of this? You didn't? Um, where we were last year at, um, Hugh Mercer, we were eight fifty-two on the tenth day. Nine oh six this year. That's over fifty kids.
Right.
At Walker Grant, tenth day last year, we were eight fifty-seven, tenth day this year, eight thirty-five.
You mean Lafayette?
Lafayette, I'm sorry.
Okay, so last year they were at eight fif- eight fifty-seven at this time?
And this year?
Which was exactly what Mosley had predicted.
Yep, last year. Um, tenth day at Walker Grant last year was seven seventeen. This year, uh, seven sixty-four. That's a huge jump.
That's a jump.
And again, I believe more kids are there now than they were day ten.
They're nodding, the Walker Grant people.
Of course they are, they're understaffed too. Kidding. Tenth day last year at James Monroe, uh, one thousand ten, this year one thousand thirty-five. So up.
That's a big jump.
Twenty-five kids.
Okay.
Total last year was thirty-four, thirty-six, this year thirty-five, forty, so almost a hundred kids, a hundred kids more.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions? Statements? Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's, you all will have those to share with city council, those numbers when you all go.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Okay, the next item, um, is the independent audit of Fredericksburg City Public Schools.
I think that's, you all will have those to share with city council, those numbers, when you all go.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. Okay, the next item, um, is the independent audit of Fredericksburg City Public Schools' Activity Funds for the year ended June thirty, twenty-eighteen. Mr. Baker?
Uh, this evening, the most important thing I can tell you is that, um, the audit firm determined that our financial statements presented fairly in all material aspects, the activity funds for the schools for the year ended June the thirtieth. That means they had no significant findings, uh, in their management letter. Not to say there weren't any findings, but they were de minimis or insignificant in terms of, uh, the overall presentation of financial statements. So, uh, we, we had another year of, uh, some unusual occurrences as we had last year and we got through it. And I would just like you to remember to thank the bookkeepers when you're in the schools. You know, at the elementary school level, they're doing a whole lot more than bookkeeping. And at the high school, they're doing a lot of volume of bookkeeping, just to say thank you when you go by. They, they really do a lot of work for us and, uh, I don't, I don't know that a lot of people thank them for that, so...
Oh, and how many years have we had the same auditors?
Uh, let's see, maybe twelve years now?
Do they change partners or managers only?
Well, what happened in the history of this, real briefly, uh, we had a, another audit firm doing activity funds. The city was using the same audit firm, and I believe that's been going on for over twenty years. Uh, there was one year the city used, uh, another firm out of Richmond, but, but they're back to that same audit firm again. So, uh, some time ago, uh, we determined we could cut our fees in half if we went to the same firm that does the activity funds. Um, so the bigger picture is, uh, if the city was to move to another accounting firm, then in all likelihood, we would have to go out to the street to, to secure another activity fund firm. And I will say that the, the staff they're using, uh, years ago, they used to turn over quite a bit. We felt like we were training their staff. Uh, but they're now staying with the firm and they're, they're very efficient and, uh, accurate and just very professional, the group that's doing it.
But, you know, there has to be a sense of independence. So if they've been there for longer than five years, you may need to change staff if you're not gonna change firms.
That's true. And, uh, I even brought that to the attention of the state, um, accounting, not just the audit of public accounts for the state, but years ago, I wrote a letter to Virginia Society of CPAs to question that, and I wrote a letter to the AICPA to question it. And I was very dutifully told that they had independence because of the way they managed their, um, internal control and their quality control. They pass information between audit firms and, and so, uh...
Well, I'm referring to the staff that come in to do the audit. Usually, you're supposed to rotate the staff.
I agree.
Okay, okay. So it may be time to do that and you may wanna consider that. Um, also, I'm, why do we bank in Rutha Glenn? I was just wondering, I saw that in the report.
I don't remember exactly how that started, but I believe that's where we had to split some of the funds up because of the, uh, Fes, Federal Depository Insurance Corporation. Are you talking about the activity fund account?
Yeah, I just saw Rutha Glenn as a bank.
Right, I think that's where their operations...
When it was wrong with Fredericksburg Banks.
I think that's where their operations center is, even though we may deposit locally, I think their...
Okay, okay.
Banks are just a front now, you don't really meet or greet anyone of influence at the branch. It's all done at some computer back in the background now, so...
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I skipped the, um, superintendent's annual school report. So we need to go back and do that one.
Most important thing I wanna let you know is, we got a report in about a week before it was, uh, the final due date. I will say that we have a cutoff, uh, mandatory cutoff for our recognition of revenues of August the thirty-first, and that's part of the audit process where, uh, they need to close the books per se, at least a soft close, to get the financial statements done. Um, so the only thing that we have is reconciling items, uh, between the annual school report and the, and the financials issued by the city at this time that I'm, I'm aware of. We had three revenue items come in in the month of September that we could not post, uh, as part of our, uh, work. And so they're gonna show up as audit adjustments. So those three items will be reconciling items back, uh, to the annual school report. None of the expenditures are out by even a penny, they all total. It's just those three, uh, revenue items that, that were past the cutoff date for our, our operational work.
Well, I, I always commend you on the, um, annual school report, 'cause I remember the days that we would struggle and struggle and be months and months and months before we would get it out. So that's a good thing, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the next information item is the annual discipline, crime and violence report. Dr. Russ?
Good evening, once again. I, in your packet, you were, uh, given a copy of the, uh, comparison chart. Do you all just, we need to open the floor for questions. There's a couple of things I do wanna point out. Uh, if you look at the last page, the non-disabled students and both are non-disabled students for seventeen-eighteen and sixteen-seventeen, I did call, uh, so a young lady who prepared this packet and asked if the ISS numbers were correct for Lafayette. Have you noticed those? Says last year, we had two students given, uh, ISS and this year, we had one student. I knew that was probably not correct. Those were being coded incorrectly, not on purpose, I can promise you. Uh, it's just a little, so, this changed, how this section was reported was changed a few years back. Uh, the young lady who is, uh, entering these, we just have to correct her and show her where these should be entered. I did get the numbers from, um, Ms. Filmick. In the top block, where you see the number one, that should be two-seventy-eight. And the bottom of the page, where you see the two, that should be three-oh-five. So if you're looking from seventeen, uh, sixteen-seventeen to this past year, that would be a decline. And I will point out that each of those schools declined in the number of in-school sus, uh, yeah, the number of in-school suspensions from sixteen-seventeen to seventeen-eighteen. Uh, and two of our schools, James Monroe and Walker Grant, decreased the number of short-term suspensions. And I know that's a hot topic, uh, keeping students in the building for instructional time is, is important. But I will be glad to answer any questions you may have about this.
Okay, so now you just confused me a little when you switched numbers. But I have, I was prepared to say that I was concerned with numbers at Lafayette and Walker Grant, when I originally looked at the numbers. Um, but now that you've rearranged things, I'm not sure... I'm not sure I should be concerned. So, um, I mean, you know, um, I'm al, we're always concerned about discipline and, um, would probably, at least from my standpoint, I don't know how the other board members feel, but for those schools that may have high suspensions, at some point, you know, maybe a presentation can be done on, um, plans of improvement, what's causing it, or something at some point.
I understand, and there are, there are specific strategies and objectives and plans and all those schools to improve, uh, the, the numbers of discipline referrals and suspensions.
Okay.
So, yeah, that is something that could be shared.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Russ?
I, I just wanna reiterate this. I, I'm in full support of hearing how we're addressing it, more than the numbers themselves.
Got you.
Okay, great. Okay, so I guess now we're at, uh, old business. Okay, with Dr. Catlett, will you take that back to, um...
Yeah, and CTE.
Yep, okay.
And we can provide a CTE update as well.
Okay.
We've made some progress in both areas.
Okay, great. The VSBA Annual Convention will be held on November fourteen through sixteen. All board members are registered to attend, yay. Board members are encouraged to review the information which has been provided by the VSBA via email concerning the various workshops and other events which will take place at the convention. So everyone's going? Is everyone participating in the run-walk?
Rain or shine.
Okay, all right, great.
Just walking.
Next, I would like to remind board members that we plan to invite our legislators to visit our schools in November in recognition of VSBA Take Your Legislator to School Month. Ms. Holmes will be working with our clerk and staff to plan the visit. Great. Okay, no items of new business this evening? Does anyone have good of the order? All right.
Dr. Catlett has done a fantastic job filling in as our superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Catlett.
I'd just like to say, I congratulate the staff on a great opening of school. There were a lot of challenges in the first week with the weather conditions and all, but you all really did a great job and appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Catlett, for reminding us of that. Absolutely. Okay, there being no further business to discuss at this regular meeting for September ten, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
May I get a second?
Moved by Ms. Holmes, second by Ms. Palmlyroy. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.